Okay, moving on to our final item, number six. Updates to the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics. Proposed action is adopt the updates to the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics as recommended by the Council Pointing to Councilmember Ad hoc Subcommittee, the City Manager, Attorney, and City Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Big Stick, Mayor Potem Vaterlos, Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm pleased to present this item tonight, which is a continuation from September 12th, when the City Council first took up considering recommendation, recommended revisions to the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics. What I'll do in this presentation is provide some context about the rules and code of ethics, and then, one of the struggles with the previous September 12th discussion was not having a detailed presentation about the recommendations prior to public comment, so my recommendation, unless the mayor and the council deems otherwise, is to then go through the remaining, either the recommendations that were already considered by council, or start where the council left off previously, and go through the policy and the track changes, so I can summarize what they are, then take council questions, and then public comment, and then back to council for deliberations. So, there are options there, but I wanted to provide the option of being very detailed in the staff presentation about the recommended changes.
Oh, I see. Yes, please do.
Okay, great. Let's begin. So, first, why are we looking at the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics? Well, it's a best practice for SARS to, as we can, to revisit policies and to update them, and this is a policy that hasn't been touched since 2014, and there are a lot of, there's cleanup language. I would say there are several categories of the edits that are being made. There's formatting and wording clarifications in the policy. There are clarifications regarding current council practices that have evolved over time and are not maybe consistent with the rules say. And then there's also cleanup related to being consistent with changes in state law. And generally, the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics covers a broad range of topics, including operation of the city council meetings, order of the agenda, council communications, council member and public decorum, and city council relationship with city staff. The, I guess with that context, I should say also that there was a two-member council ad hoc committee of Mayor Big Stick and former councilmember O'Neill that participated during last year and several meetings to really comb through this policy and review and make the recommendations to the full city council. So, what I'll do now is then just jump into the actual track changes and go through and offer, you know, at a high level, explain each one as we go through, and then we'll come back and talk about specific ones. Now, let me ask you a question. Is it the mayor's preference to start from the beginning of the policy, or start from where council deliberation left off last time, which is Section 7-12?
I think we should go through a quick overview of what we already discussed. One thing I noted, gonna note it during deliberations, but Page 462, there was an instance of oral communications that apparently hadn't been replaced with public communications.
Great, okay. Yeah, so let me just start. Let's just go right from the beginning, and City Clerk Coffey's gonna scroll through on the screen as we go through. So, from page one, I'll run through.
So, you don't have to all go through.
Can you change the formatting so we see all the track changes? Great, there we are. So, on page one, an additional whereas was added, noticing that one of the key components of this policy is to be transparent to members of the community for the expectations and roles of responsibilities of members of the council, and standards for conducting city council meetings. That whereas was added.
City Manager?
Yes.
Do we have an intention of placing a table of contents at the beginning?
Yes, and that's noted in the report, that after we finalize, there's quite a few formatting changes that might be confusing in the track changes version, but in the final version, after it's finalized, we will have a table of contents. So, we will add that.
Thank you.
So, scrolling down to the bottom of page two, under operation of city council meetings...
Just to interrupt you one more time, councilmembers, if anybody has a question as he's going through, feel free to ask clarifying questions, and we'll do a more proper deliberation after public comment.
Sure, that sounds great. So, one item that we will want to, in this change here, regular city council meetings will be held on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Back in September, the council had discussed looking at the possibility of a designated special council meeting day throughout months or years, and there was quite a bit of discussion about, well, what day of the week and what week of the month doesn't conflict with other commission or committee meetings. It was discussed that perhaps the Wednesday where the library advisory committee meeting meets could be changed, since that committee hadn't been meeting, but will start meeting again, could be changed. But then another alternative that was discussed was, for those months that have a fifth Monday, that that could be set as a special council meeting day, and this is intended to, as we have busy agenda items, there's that set date that everyone has on their calendar, so it's easy to schedule if we need it for a special council meeting. So, that decision wasn't made. It's noted here in the margin that we should take a moment during discussion to talk about whether we want to identify the fifth Monday or some other option. But at this point in time, in staff's analysis, it might be easiest to look at the fifth Monday, because all the other days of weeks conflict with other regional or city council, or city commissioner committee meetings, et cetera. So, we can come back to that. I just wanted to point out that change. Moving on then to page three, you'll see a comment here and some redline edits that throughout the entire document, and we certainly will proof check this before we finalize, were replacing oral communications with public comments, the term "public comments" instead of oral communications.
And the instance I had referenced was under C, at the end of it.
And then, down at the bottom of the page, or some of these other changes, I'm not gonna go through every change, because some of them are just clarification stuff. I'll try to summarize what we're striving for, so, in some of these edits. So, the bottom item E talks about the public comment process on council items, on agenda items that are written in, and the timing for submitting those, and then, for those comments to be submitted to the city council. And it refers to the agenda notice, which includes what that timing is. Moving on to...
Can I just ask a question about process? If there's things we notice, are we stating them in deliberations? Because we have to take public comment first, right? So, like, if I see something where I'm like, can you change the pronoun? That has to be done after? Mayor, I'm just curious of our process.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, while we're going through it, as things are occurring to you, feel free to jump in. Let's try and, the metaphor I'll use is we'll try and get through the coarser stuff now, so if it jumps at you, by all means. And this is one where I think process is kind of difficult, because we're going through an entire document, and so if we're kind of doing the work of looking through it on the front end, then we'll just go through and throw our thoughts as they occur, and then after public comment, we can have a deliberation that does refinements to the workshopping.
Okay. Thank you.
The revisions to Section H on page four relate to the handling of public comments at the city council meeting, and not discussing those items from the public comment period on non-agendized items in order to comply with the Brown Act. The change in 4A regarding addressing the council on regular agenda items talks about the mayor's decision about three minutes or limiting that, depending on how many speakers there are?
I don't know if this is the time to say that, but I think that conflicts with 2.2, that says three minutes unless approved by the majority of the council.
The, I believe the way that happens is that the mayor will ask the council when limiting comment time for a acquiescence or head nod about doing that.
That's general practice. We want to make sure that it's indicated specifically in the document, though, so that there's no confusion.
We'll make a note of those two sections.
Thank you.
The next changes are really, in C, are related to cleanups about process. Section five, which relates to public hearings, appeals, and the council discussed this in September, was to clarify that an appeal would be 10 minutes and three minutes for rebuttal, instead of the three minutes being taken out of the 10 minutes. The next section, Section three, related, is some cleanup related to public decorum, and what you'll see in this public decorum section are cleanup that brings the section in compliance with state law. So, Item C talks about and cites the California law related to removal of a speaker from the meeting. And because, generally, as a rule about these council rules, and we'll talk about this more when we get to some of the later sections, we try not to repeat what state law requires, because it would be redundant, and then if state law were to change, you'd have to revise the policy, so it's better to just refer to the state law and defer to the state law. Section four relating to city council decorum, clarified language there in interactions between and among council members, from council members towards the public and staff, and from the public towards council members and staff. Seeing if there's anything. And again, part of these changes and some of the strikeout, strike-throughs, I think, relate to being consistent with state law. Moving on to page seven, the ending part of E, which begins on page six, this item took a bit of council discussion in September, and I think the council had prescribed some language that we may be cleaned up, but is, to add in here, discussion about, it really gets at this issue of if there were a filibustering kind of situation, and to use language that says, "or monopolizing discussion and time in a manner that does not facilitate or further deliberation, general understanding, or bring the issue to a conclusive decision." The Section F there, it speaks to the importance of, if council members need more information on specific agenda items, to be requesting that through the city manager prior to the meeting, and staff and I will make all reasonable efforts to respond to those questions prior to the meeting, which has been a standard practice. Moving on to Section five, order of the agenda, what you'll see in this section is a lot of strike-through, but that's because the consent calendar, Section four consent calendar, Section five council communications, have been reorganized and included in Section six, regular agenda items. So, that's a readability edit to the document. So, if we move to page eight, Section six begins the regular agenda items, and for special presentations, language is added there to make it consistent with the practice we've had recently, and that is to do special presentations at the outset of the meeting, as well as to limit commendations, proclamations, and special presentations to more than 20 minutes, in council's interest of trying to manage the duration of our city council The, under Item two, about the consent calendar, the clarification in there about how consent calendar items are handled. And on the next page, nine, at the end of the consent calendar item, the, there's an addition there to mention, which the council had discussed, about the full agenda packet being made available in print format at City Hall and at the council chambers during the meeting. I believe state law perhaps requires a printed copy being available at one location, but we, the council was interested in providing it to, getting a head nod from the city clerk, Again, I think the public comment on non-agendized items struck out oral communications, and stating what the purpose of those public comments are. Moving on, the section on council consideration is, has been edited and reorganized to Section four earlier in the document, so that's why there's all that strike-through. And if we move to Section seven, regarding deliberation and voting, there's a clarification on page 11. The previous language was a little bit ambiguous about the mayor's, the mayor being able to move and second and discuss from the chair, and so we wanted to clarify that that is indeed the case. And I think that brings us to Section 712, which is where the previous council's deliberation left off. So, from here on, I'll go through the document as I have been, and focus on the changes that are being recommended.
So, I just want to clarify for council at this point, since we've gone through the material that we have already edited, let's try and save the wordsmithing for deliberation, but if you have questions for anything specific that he's going over, please ask any specific questions.
Good, great.
Thank you.
Regarding Section 12, abstention from vote, it's not necessary to state the reason for abstention. Assistant City Attorney Buzano could elaborate on that if necessary.
Correct. So, just for clarification, these are abstentions that are non-legal abstentions. So, for the conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act, there's a process for stating the reasons for recusal, and we would still need to follow that. These are for non-legal abstentions, so, personal reasons that you might want to, you know, recuse yourself from an item. That would not need to be stated in the record.
If somebody does abstain for that reason, like, usually if it's a legal reason, they would have to leave the dais and go over there to the closed-door room, and if somebody's abstaining for personal reasons, presumably they wouldn't have to go through that process?
That would be up to the councilmember. There would not be a legal requirement for leaving the dais, but it would be up to the councilmember.
So, just to put a fork in it, in theory, a councilmember could abstain from a vote, and there's no problem with that necessarily?
Right. If it's a non-legal abstention, like, you have a personal reason, you want to recuse yourself, then it's still up to the councilmember whether or not they want to step off the dais. I will say that, you know, that would eliminate any confusion as to whether or not you're participating in the item when you leave the dais. So, it's usually a best practice to leave the dais for non-legal abstentions as well.
Could somebody actually go through the deliberative process, and then at the last minute say, "and I'm abstaining from voting"?
Well, typically, that would be, you know, they decide they're gonna disqualify themselves at the beginning of the item, right?
Very good, thank you.
So, I guess I'm wondering what a non-legal kind of excuse, like, you can, so, if I have something personal going on or whatever, and I don't think I should be part of the conversation, I can just abstain?
So, that's what this particular provision is about, abstention from the vote for non-legal reasons, and it does provide a way for the councilmember to, like, so the example that's used is such as a friendship or appearance of maybe, you know, improprieties, so. Yeah, so like, if you have a friend that, you know, it's not a common law conflict, it's not a conflict under the Political Reform Act, you feel that you could handle the matter in an unbiased manner, but you think, you know, an abundance of caution, because this person is my friend, I think, you know, it's a personal reason, I'm gonna abstain from the vote, so you would probably handle it, or it would probably be a good idea to handle it in the same way you would handle other conflicts, where you just say at the beginning, "I'm gonna abstain from this item for personal reasons," or, as this says, you don't have to identify the actual conflict, and then you could either leave, or you could remain on the dais.
So, if Chris, who I consider my friend, brings something forward, I can choose whether I want to abstain or not, because it's not a financial gain for me, but then I could recuse myself based on friendship, which doesn't seem like it should have an effect on something that people bring forward to council.
Nor is it suggested that you do recuse yourself if you have a friendship?
You have a choice, yeah.
You know, hopefully, we'll never be in a position to find out. Something could be controversial, leading to someone making such a choice, or, you know, who knows? I think it's articulated here merely that it's not illegal for somebody to take that action if they believe their conflict supersedes the law in the case of not having to abstain just because of the law.
I heard another example at our training last week, from a lady who had been, like, a strong advocate of, like, bicycle and pedestrian things, and so she definitely, like, obviously in the community and public, had a bias towards that issue before knowing that it would come up, and I don't know, there was a suggestion that she might recuse herself.
I don't recall whether or not it had to do with land use, though, because in matters of land use, bias might be a concern.
We may be venturing into discussion.
I agree.
We could come back to whether there's any clarification required on that, but it sounds like it's more just understanding the various scenarios, so the abstention to vote, from vote, you know, information still applies.
So, I'm gonna use a real example that I've spoken out about rent control, and I was told that I don't have to recuse myself on any rent control issues, because it's not, it's not a financial issue, but even though I have spoken about it a lot, I mean, that's one of the reasons I got on council, so.
I guess one thing I would offer, which was actually discussed at the CalCities conference, was, a lot of times, the question about recusal or abstention from vote is a very issue-specific discussion, and that's why the city attorney exists, to advise council members about what they maybe should do.
Okay.
Yes, I think, you know, we have to be careful about not getting into specifics, as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, but it's also a very personal decision. So, if it's a non-legal abstention, meaning you're not required to under the law, then, you know, you need to consider why you would participate, or why you might not participate, and for every councilmember, that is a process that we are willing and able to help with.
So, the answer is, it's complicated?
It's complicated.
Okay.
We're done opining, please continue.
Item 14 regarding Thai votes clarifies the situations in which the underlying, if you do have a Thai vote, that the underlying action stands. The previous language just said, "in the case of an appeal," but that also applies to land use decisions, maybe two of the most common. There may be other decisions where there's an underlying condition that would stand in a Thai vote as well, but it just helps to clarify that. Motion to reconsider...
Mary, did you have a question?
I'm so sorry. Should I be pressing my button? I probably should, huh?
I'm happy for you to just jump in and ask your questions as the comment.
Thank you so much. So, why use the word "generally"? I mean, I don't know, I just, sorry.
We could, perhaps could take out the word "generally."
Where's the word "generally"?
After Thai votes?
Yeah, so it says Thai votes generally mean that no action has been taken on a I think because we want to, there, I think there could be instances where a Thai vote means something different than no action. So, this speaks specifically to appeals or land use decisions, and so, there could be instances where a Thai vote means more than just that the underlying action stands. So, that's why "generally" is often used as sort of a caveat to meaning that we can't speak to every instance, right? There may be certain exceptions that are not being contemplated right now.
Good enough, thank you.
That's lawyer language.
But before you go, I'm sorry, I missed on Item 13, the rule of necessity. Can you explain that, or is that, or like, if you're referring to a specific legal thing, maybe we can put the link to, to whatever that...
So, the rule of necessity is a rule in, under the Political Reform Act, that allows a councilmember to participate even though they do have a disqualifying conflict of interest. So, if there are three councilmembers who have a conflict of interest, but we need at least three councilmembers to take the action, so, for example, in ordinance, the rule of necessity... rule of necessity would apply, and the three council members that have conflicts of interest would draw lots to determine which one is brought back in to participate in the item.
Say you have three members that are, work for the school district.
Right.
When's the last time we had to draw lots in order to determine something legal in the City of Pacifica?
I don't know about City of Pacifica, but I just did it the other day for another council meeting.
Really?
It does happen, yes.
Fascinating.
And so, why wouldn't we have like an asterisk with a definition, or is it not necessary? But that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah. Or a link to the legal definition, or like if we're quoting a law, it would be nice to have the link in there, so us or the public could find it.
We could certainly add that footnote with the regulation number.
Add clarification on that. Moving on to item 15, motion to reconsider. This section was confusing previously and needed some clarification. We actually did recently determine that we think we need to clean this up a little more, so we maybe should come back and discuss it, because the middle sentence says, "A motion to reconsider may be made at any time before the posting of the next regular meeting agenda." But a motion can only be made in a city council meeting, so we need to come up with a language that clarifies that. And Section B was part of the confusion with Section A, so by striking out Section B and putting clarification in Section A, that hopefully clarifies.
Can I ask a question on the reconsideration? So, say I'm on a council, and it's three to two, and I'm on the losing side, but I, now the people have changed, and I'd like to make a motion to reconsider something that happened years ago.
No, it says that it's, oh, sorry.
Yeah, but how does that ever happen?
So, in that instance, you would just propose an agenda item.
Okay.
No, you know, a new agenda item to discuss that topic again, because it wouldn't be a motion to reconsider, because you don't have an item before you to reconsider after all that time has passed.
But what if a resolution was made there? It's okay?
So, you would have an item, you would propose a new agenda item to reconsider, you know, either repealing or rescinding resolutions, such and such.
Okay. Thank you.
I need to understand why the first sentence was struck. I thought that defined when you could do a motion to reconsider. I understand what Kevin was saying about how the posting of the next regular meeting agenda confuses things, because it would imply that the day before the agenda is posted, we could submit a motion to reconsider, but you can't, because you can only make a motion in the meeting. But the first sentence says, "A motion that struck." I thought that framed when you could do it.
I'm trying to remember from the committee discussion, and perhaps that does clarify what we're trying to revisit and clarify here.
Right. So, I think one suggestion would be to reject that first track change and add that sentence back in, so that it's clear that that motion to reconsider can only be taken at the meeting at which the action was taken. And then, you could add some other language down farther in the paragraph that just indicates that, you know, nothing in this section would preclude a council member from bringing, you know, an item back to consider a prior action of the council at a future agenda through the agendizing process set forth in the rules.
That sounded very confusing to me, but it seems like, just riffing off of what Councilmember Beckmeyer said, if we keep in that first sentence, and also keep in that bit later on during the meeting, and then get rid of before the posting of the next regular meeting agenda, that should make it all kosher, unless I'm missing something legally.
Okay.
And so, if... If we're backtracking those changes under A, is there any reason to keep in B, or are we keeping that deleted? Guess that would stay deleted.
There's a sort of a temporal confusion here, I believe.
Yeah. So, I would keep... I would keep that second paragraph deleted, because there's nothing that would prevent the council member from bringing that issue up at a future council meeting as a new agenda item. But the motion to reconsider would be moot, because the item had already passed, the action had already been taken place.
Got it.
And that's consistent with Robert's Rules, which provides that the motion to reconsider needs to be made at that meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay. Are we moving on?
Yeah. That middle sentence, "A motion to reconsider may be made at any time," shouldn't we keep that in the following part during the meeting, and then get rid of before the posting of the next regular meeting agenda?
I know you're going to keep that first paragraph, first sentence, Sarah, or are you going to leave that?
So, in that sentence, the part that's struck out, we leave in, and the part that's added, we strike out. So, during the meeting, or the three words that get put back in, "at any time during the meeting."
Do you see that, Sarah?
Yeah, right there. "A motion to reconsider may be made at any time during the meeting." And then, we delete before the posting. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Wait two more. The additions in Section 16 discuss, in terms of mayor, the mayor presides over, you know, process decisions and such in the council meetings, and so I believe this is discussing the process, to Councilmember Bowles' question earlier, I believe, being consistent about how the council, well, a procedural decision or ruling of the mayor may be appealed by any council member of the whole council, and then needing a majority vote.
So, I have a note here, just questioning why that last part was removed.
The, are you talking about the part on the next page?
Yes. That starts with any procedural decision. Like, basically, what was the logic behind removing it?
It seems that it's maybe clarified better earlier in the language used earlier, right? It's saying the same thing, but the language is clarified.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the added language clarifies it better.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Section 8 regarding motions. The, in this section, there's a couple, there's a mention of motion to adjourn the meeting, motion to take a recess. In practice, those are not something for Pacifica or the city council where motions and votes are, have typically been done, so it was recommended to strike those out. In some cities, they do move to adjourn the meeting and require a vote to adjourn the meeting, but... I think similarly for motion to call for the order of the agenda, item F. And then, the, later down there, the new item G. Just clarify, there was some old language about agency, body, committee, board, commission, or officer, and really, what we're talking here, the council makes referrals to city commissions, committee, officer, or city council ad hoc subcommittee, so it's being more specific about who the council makes, refers items to.
Can we go back to D, the personal privilege, because I just don't understand that very much? And the process?
Uh, let's see. Which is this? Which item?
Oh, shoot. It was called personal privilege.
I think it's C.
What's?
I think it's the new C.
Right, it was crossed.
New number two C, on the top of packet page 473.
Oh, yeah. Motion to raise a question of personal privilege.
Yeah. Can you just explain how that would be used, and this is where, like, a council member would interrupt another council member, but somehow get the mayor's recognition? I just, I just don't really understand it.
Assistant City Attorney Bazzano, do you have any insight on personal privilege provision?
Let me see what it says. So, I've seen it, I've seen it done during deliberations, and I've seen it done after public comment. So, I think it's just if the maker of the motion may interrupt another speaker if the mayor recognizes the privilege. The motion does not require, second is not, the right of a council member to address the council on a question of personal privilege is usually related to their, somebody has said something that is negative about their character, their motives, or their integrity, and the council member wants to address it immediately. And so, that's when that motion is, I've seen it made. It doesn't come up very frequently.
May it never come up in Pacifica.
So, moving on to the next page. I believe that the motion to take from the table is a very seldom-used or esoteric thing, but wasn't necessary to have in here, and is covered by Robert's Rules, right?
Well, my understanding of why this wasn't necessary was because of the way that the council agendizes items, so that the motion to put something, to take something from the table, to re-agendize it essentially, is not strictly necessary, because there is a way for council members to agendize items.
Okay. And moving to the Section 9 about closed sessions. Item 3, breach of rule of confidentiality. There's a recommend, there's a reference to and subject to the penalties as described in item 9 below, to make that clear. In item 5 regarding permissible topics, one of the, I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, that this is one of the sections that is governed by state law, and therefore, listing out these different permissible topics is redundant to that, and we try to not overlap as much as possible. There's also pertaining to closed session, Section 8, rules of decorum, and the strikeout provisions there also are requirements that would be redundant. Which... There's a lot of the next page into, onto page 17, that is all governed by the Brown Act, right? Yeah. And then, Section 9, renumbered, Section 9 penalties, no changes to that section, just a renumbering. Moving on to Section 10. City council relationship with city staff. Just clarification in there that to say, instead of staff, the city manager is my responsibility in item 3 there, that's the only change in that entire section. And then, moving on to Section 11, administrative matters. And I will speak to item 3 here in more depth in one second. The item 1, I'm looking at the strike through there. I think that that was not clear about our process. The rest of it is clear. Study sessions and closed sessions will be scheduled before city council meetings as needed. And then, is there a... Oh, I see. It's just an in-depth, okay, in the next, attendance at meetings. Is the, I guess I'm wondering why attendance at meetings is stricken. Oh, because the others don't have subtitles. Yeah, so, attendance at meetings is in strike-through, because to be consistent with the rest of the section and not having...
Because we don't have to come, so we strike it out, and we don't have to come.
Yeah, that's right.
Like it.
So, let me speak, let me speak, because this, item 3, which relates to agendizing items for city council meetings, was discussed thoroughly at the September 12 council meeting, and I want to take a moment on this one, because it's an important one that the council should discuss.
And since the public seem to have particular interest in this specific item, I want to remind council members that deliberation will come after public comment, and I want to do it specifically. If you have questions, no problem, but if we do wind up having a more robust conversation, I want to make sure that I hear public comment to inform it, and then we can discuss as we need to, by all means. Might be helpful now to turn to a button, but please ask questions of staff to clarify as needed.
So, can I just clarify? We're talking about Section 11, Administrative Matters, item number 3 on packet page 478. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. So, in this section, it really is intended to clarify how items become agendized, and the recommendation doesn't change the ability, and this is, these are points that are in the staff report that I'll reiterate here, the recommendation doesn't change the ability of a single council member to place an item on the council's agenda, except to change the seven-day timeline to a 10-day timeline for practical reasons, and that is... is to, to actually give more than one to two days if an item's placed on the agenda for staff to prepare the, the staff report before the agendas are released. The, this recommendation comports with the current practice, and really is, you know, hallmark of our council manager form of government and local government democracy, which is that issues that come up that would redirect city council previously-directed work priorities or budget require a majority approval of the council to change. Therefore, if a council member wants to place an issue on the agenda that would require significant city staff resources to prepare, that work must be directed by a majority of the council first. And so the one-hour rule reference is that a quick report would be placed on the agenda so that the council could, so, so that the city manager could receive council direction on next steps about whether city staff resources should be spent analyzing that item. So the, I, after the last discussion on September 12th, a clarification or a cleanup that may be helpful here is to remove the reference to potentially controversial items, and just refer to items that may require more than one hour of staff time to sufficiently analyze and prepare a staff report. The importance of that is that we have a very robust work plan directed by the city council, and managing staff time and our financial resources is critical throughout the year. It's my responsibility and concern to, to manage that. And it's not, it's more about staff time than it is about whether an item's controversial or not. Sometimes those go hand in hand. Perhaps there's times when those wouldn't go hand in hand. But, so the point would be that in this clarifying language here, number one, a council member could request an item for the agenda 10 days in advance instead of seven days, because that is more practical and workable from the staff perspective. And then, number two, if it is a, if it's not a time-consuming item, let's say it's a quick legislative support item, for example, and we have analysis from other cities that's available, and we can kind of regurgitate that analysis, throw together the staff report, get it on the agenda, that makes sense. But if it's an item that really is going to require an amount of staff time more than typically an hour, you know, and it's an hour, give or take, right, but it's, it's a resource impact that diverts staff's focus on all their other responsibilities, I need to hear from the council majority whether we're going to spend time analyzing that and bringing it forward for council direction. So this is the practice ever since I've been here that we've done, when there has been an item recommended, the first action by council is, yes, we're interested in spending more time on this item. And so that's what's agendized, is that, that kind of quick council decision.
So I'm going to have a couple questions. And I, let me, I'm sure we'll deliberate on this particular item, but I, I've been trying to really wrap my head around some of the public comment that I've received. Because at a glance, certainly the intention was benign. And it took me a minute to really try and see if there's a there there. So my first question is, the part that struck out, all agenda items requiring a detailed staff report may be placed on the agenda, et cetera. That's what was there initially, right? That's the original text?
Yes.
So secondarily, my question is, okay, so let's say we make the change. Here it's written, items that may require more than one hour of staff time. Could a part of our deliberation tonight be maybe changing one hour to five hours, or kind of hone in on what we think is an acceptable workload for an agendized item brought forth by one council member? And the reason I bring up that question is because the original text did say requiring a detailed staff report, which is kind of an ambiguous term. But if the idea here is to hone down what's a reasonable amount of staff time to bring forth for, unilaterally bring forth for council discussion. My thinking is maybe part of the impetus for, what for some people has seemed to be rather an outcry, is well, before, you could call for more than an hour of work from staff unilaterally, and now it really whittles down what maybe is an important issue bringing forward, that maybe a little bit more TLC is needed to enable that council person to discuss it with their fellow council people. And again, I'm really trying to wrap my head around, what I went going into this thinking was benign. And so a part of our discussion perhaps could be honing in on what a reasonable amount of time is, period? Regardless if that's one hour, five hours, a day and a half, whatever?
Yes. Yeah, I think the council could, could discuss that, that parameter. And I'd be happy to, you know, offer my input about staff workload in that context of that discussion.
And again, you know, I, I get to work with you, we get to work with you on a constant basis. So with a recommendation like this, my initial response is, well, of course, that makes sense. We work with you, we know how you operate, and we want to see that we keep the, the machine functioning and running smoothly. But I also appreciate that the original nomenclature is a detailed staff report. So I guess that's to say, as soon we will be going into public comment, you know, some of the phrases used questioning the democracy of the change notwithstanding what might actually be helpful to me, if not my fellow council people, are suggestions from the public as to what a reasonable workload would be when a single council member requests to have an item agendized. Any other questions?
And, and keeping in mind during that discussion that there are five council members.
So we could all answer ourselves.
I take my light back. Just answer my question, and I'll talk more during deliberation.
Okay, so I think I've kind of summarized the recommendation on that. And in addition to perhaps suggesting for the council to consider removing the phrase controversial items. The changes, I'm looking at section four, any council questions on that? Clarifies the council member roles when representing the city in other meetings in other contexts?
Sorry, I did have a question, but I, I don't, maybe we should talk about this At the beginning, it talks about other governmental organization, agencies, organizations, but then later on, it just says, council member shall notify the mayor of planned attendance at meetings, period, wherever possible. And so I just, I want to clarify the intent and, and how much you want us telling you. If I'm meeting with a neighbor about potholes, that's a meeting, right? So about city business. So, you know, how much do you really, really want to know? I mean, is, is the intention really just to make sure that we're not, you know, violating the Brown Act, going to a meeting at the same time?
Correct me if I'm wrong, this refers specifically to city-led meetings, is that correct? Or is it a wider scope than that?
I thought it was wider.
An organization.
Yes.
Like, say I was going to speak at the Democrats.
Yeah, I thought it was wider.
I would have to let you know.
Yeah.
That I was going to speak there.
Oh, I see.
And then I was going to inform you that I would be attending. He's looking at me, don't tell me. But, but it's okay if more than two council members go, as long as they're not speaking and talking to each other, right? And, and talking about city business.
Okay, so, let's say, you know, when it comes up that we'll be giving the state of the city speech at the city Democrats. At that point, what, what are the proper Brown Act compliant procedures we need to follow? Can other council members be there? Do we need to really worry about it?
Well, this, this section, I think is more to how a council member is representing city issues at a meeting, right? And, you know, making sure if you are going to appear in a personal capacity and express your personal opinions, that you clarify that those statements don't represent the position of the city council, but that you first also, you know, state if the city does have a position on that issue, you're representing that position because you're a representative of the city. I don't think this section speaks as much to, you know, quorum, Brown Act violations. Although in the, well, in the, in the one point about knowing when council members are going to meetings is to be aware and manage so that there's not a quorum at the meeting, which we do regularly, right? And, yeah.
So I, I think what Councilmember Bowles is asking or trying to clarify is if that, that language about notifying the mayor applies to member, meetings where the, meetings where the city council members may attend before another governmental agency or organization, or if it applies to even private meetings, like one-on-one meetings with constituents, for example. Is that a meeting? I think the answer is no, it doesn't extend that far. The intent was that it really address when a council member goes to the county board of supervisors' meetings, or the local chamber of commerce meetings, those types of events, rather than private one-on-one meetings with constituents. Is that correct, council member?
Yeah, or, or not even constituents. But like, you're suggesting I meet with Josh Becker. Like, do we need to tell you about all of those things if we're meeting one-on-one with someone when there's not a possibility of another council member being there? Is the intention really, I mean, we, I understand that we need to, you know, convey the city's position and so forth. That's not the question, it's just how much we need to notify each other and, and the mayor.
And if you don't mind, do we have, do we notify the mayor, or is it the city manager? Because I, I tend to tell you, Kevin, most of the, you know, like, if I'm going to a meeting with Josh Becker, I'll tell you. Right?
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it, it should maybe say notifying the city manager And it's, it's my read that, as Assistant City Attorney Bazzano said, that, that this is more related to, it's not going to specifically define, you know, every agency or organization, but it's not meant to be private one-on-one, not private, but one-on-one meetings. I think the intent of this section is more toward when you're going to a larger group meeting.
And if you don't mind, Tiger, and, and so when I read the sentence, hold on, I'll put my glasses back on. The council member will first indicate the majority position of the council. And when I read that, I, I thought of, like, does this, I'll put it into a question. Does this mean like, say there was a vote that I did not agree on, right, that made me mad or something, right? And then I'm going to go out to a meeting, like, I have to, I have to say, like, council decided. Like, I have to stand behind that, right? And so I, I, am I reading that the wrong way?
I think, I think that that point is, I'm not sure which section it's in, perhaps others remember, but that point is made that when a vote is taken, a council member represents that vote, even if you disagreed with that.
Yeah.
And then, if you want to clarify that speaking personally on an issue, what your position was in this meeting, you could do that. But you have to be very specific about clarifying that that's your personal opinion, not the position of the city council.
Thank you. I think this section you're referring to, Kevin, is section four, city council decorum, paragraph G, new G, paragraph G.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was in there someplace, yeah. And the revisions to section five really bring us up to current process and add, add in this, this new thing that we call email, that comes in when emails are addressed to council members individually.
Did we not have email in 2014? Was that the new technology of the day?
It wasn't used as widely.
Morse code.
That could be.
Yeah.
On Express.
And then, just to point out that the very last revision, in striking out item 11, it just seemed unnecessary because council, all council policies can be amended by majority vote of the council. So that's the detailed, deep dive overview of recommended changes, and that completes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Before we turn to public comment, do we have any further questions from council? I do not have a card.
I have one raised hand. It is the number ending in 0894.
So before we take that call, one more reminder that if you are watching from the live stream, please dial in 650-898-6965, conference ID 383-609-442-POUND, and press star five to raise your hand. And let us take that call from, what was the phone number?
Uh, 8094, uh, 0894, sorry.
So from number 0894, please press star five. State your name for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
Star six. They have their-
Oh, I apologize, star six to unmute. And after you press star six, give it a minute to actually unmute you. Thank you.
Yeah, hi there, it's Dinah Verbi. It's been, just if, I could just let you know about the technological difficulties, I'm sure you're aware of them, but the live stream is running at least 30 seconds behind. So it's hard to know where you are in real time. So there may be, you know, delays, et cetera, in callers. Anyway, I want to also express my despair and shock at the shooting of the Hafman Bay victims and their families. And I just wanted to express my condolences. Anyway, on the agenda item, I trust that you all had time to read my written comments, so I'm not going to read all of those verbatim. But I did want to just convey partly the history of my opposition and others' opposition to the changes in rule, in section 11.3, because it really does go to the issue of public engagement and public trust in the fairness of the council proceedings. And some of you may remember what happened back in 2015, when an item involving a temporary eviction ordinance was not allowed to be put on the city council agenda, because the majority of the council basically wouldn't let it be on the agenda. And there was a big public outcry about it. Tenants who were being evicted had been looking to the council for a remedy, and they didn't get that remedy. And it was, to a lot of us, it was a, a large miscarriage of justice, and that engendered a lot of the problems with the rule that you're now contemplating. I understand the issues with workflow and staff time and limited resources, and I understand the intention behind this proposed rule is benign. But I just felt that you really need to think about it before you enshrine and codify something that may come back to bite you later on. I think codifying this process could end up with unintended consequences. And I, I did hear the city manager say that this is not eliminating or changing the right of a council member to agendize an item, but I beg to differ because it's not eliminating- of a council member to agendize an item, but I beg to differ because if not eliminating it, it's certainly diluting it when you add in a requirement for a majority of the council to approve putting it on for a full discussion. First of all, you have Brown Act issues because one council member cannot confer with the majority of the council members to get that support. And another key issue for me is, again, maybe not anticipated or intended, but the reality of it is, if only one council member is absent from a meeting and you have four members present, it only takes two votes to kill an item. That gives you minority rule, and that, again, feels to the public like we're being disenfranchised, and that really undermines the intent, I think, of district elections and the whole public process. And it also singles out only items initiated by council, and I don't understand that. If, if workflow is a problem, it would seem that there would be other issues that would come up on the agenda that weren't on your work plan that have to be dealt with, but you're, in a sense, penalizing yourselves by only targeting, you know, issues that you yourself come up with.
Dinah?
So, and I, yeah?
I, I gave you a few extra seconds because, uh, the beginning was about the, the call itself, but it, it's been about three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't hear further, so thank you.
No worries. Thank you so much for your comments.
Bye.
Bye.
I have three more raised hands. The, the next one is the number ending in 5434, followed by the number ending in 6822. Upcoming is 5434.
5434, please press star six to unmute. Give it a moment after you press star six.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Hi, Tiger, uh, this is Jen Hanson, um, calling, there were some severe technical issues with the financial report, so wanted to drop in a, a item about that. Um, moving forward, it would be really helpful.
I'm sorry, Jen, it, so we're past the item on financial report, we're talking about the code of ethics.
Okay, I was hoping I might be able to sneak that in because the video was unreliable.
I hear you, we, we do have to stick to the agenda item at hand, but do please email us so that we can see your comments. I apologize for that.
Okay, so looking at, that's okay, looking at Section 11, subsection 3, um, I know a lot of things, from growing up in Pacifica, a lot of things have been kicked down the road over the years, and they've kind of all come to a head with the general plan and the housing, um, element and global warming and all of these other things, and the city is drowning. But in looking at the wordage that is used, words like potentially controversial or taking an hour, um, those things mean different things to different people. What's controversial to me might not be controversial to you versus my neighbor and things like that, or what could take me an hour could take somebody four hours. So I really do believe that looking at the words used, although it was meant to be benign, it looks almost like it could be weaponized to silence minority voices. And I know, um, within, you, each one of you represents a district, and in your district there's your own, um, uh, items that are important that don't necessarily influence another district. So one of the things that, that would be nice to see, um, especially now talking about city staff only being able to operate at 40% capacity and not being able to fill positions due to COVID, and now they're starting to fill those COVID positions, they should, you know, over time, workload will be able to ramp up. So maybe including some language, like, it might not, if you bring up an agenda item, it might not make it on the next agenda, which I understand, there's a lot going on, but maybe it, language could be put into that that says, within the next three meetings or next four meetings. So it is honored that although it might be controversial or it more, might take a lot of staff time, it still needs to be addressed and puts in language to make, give it a timeframe in which it should be addressed. I think that's all I got, other than, I really, I enjoyed listening to you guys tonight. I appreciate all that you guys have do, you guys are like superhuman, um, both within our city and making sure that we're represented outside our city borders, and I appreciate everybody's hard work, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your comments. Who do we have next?
Have a good one.
You as well, thank you. 6822, is that the next one?
Yeah, 6822 is coming up, followed by 1606.
6822, please press star six to unmute. Give it a moment and state your name for the record and your comment, please.
Hello?
Hello.
I need to push, yeah, I need to push the, um, um, we're on a time delay here.
You as well, thank you. 6822, is that the next one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, Sarah, if we could reset the timer. We seem to have an. So if you would please mute your live stream before you begin your comment.
Hello? Um, I'm trying to, um, I need to push the, um, um, we're on a time delay, um, give me one second, I'm trying to figure out how.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, Sarah, if we could. Or if you could turn down the volume on your stream, please? If you would please mute your live stream before you begin your comment.
I'm just trying to figure out how can I do this, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, Sarah, if we could, if you could turn down the volume on your stream, please?
Mayor Big Stick?
Hello?
Hello, I can hear you, but we're getting a lot of background noise. If you could mute or turn down the volume on the stream, or perhaps move to a different room.
All right, I'll move to a different room.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tiger.
No problem, please state your name again for the record.
Okay, my name is Mark Hubbell.
And go ahead.
And I'm trying to, hi, I'm, um, my name is Mark Hubbell, and I have concerns about the, uh, the issue that we were just talking about, um, about getting items on the agenda. And, um, I know a lot of people have already dropped off of this meeting who had, who had really wanted to take, um, partake in that conversation. My concern is that each of the five districts in Pacifica have very, very different concerns in a lot of ways, you know? Say, back in the valley, it's probably fires, you know, wildfires, which other districts don't have that same issue. So I don't think it's fair to have to have two to agree to move on, you know, two districts. It just doesn't make any sense, and I don't think it's democratic. I think the better way to do it is if there is something difficult, complex, or reads a lot of staff time, instead of going through this, why don't you just put it later in the agenda, put it, you know, a couple months later? And, um, you know, that should give you plenty of time to do it. I think an important issue, people wouldn't care if it doesn't come up the next month. They would care, care if it didn't come up at all, though, so that's what I would like to see, and I don't think it's, it's fair to have to ask for, um, a majority. I think that's just a horrible idea. And since there's very few people that were able to even attend this meeting, I think when they realized that they were unable to attend a meeting that was an outcome like that, they were going to be really angry, you know? So that's my part, and otherwise, thank you very much for what you do, and I hope you consider, really, um, seriously consider what I just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, you have a good night.
The, the last raised hand is in the number ending 1606.
1606, please press star six to unmute. Give it a moment to fully unmute, state your name for the record, and let us know what you think.
Hi, uh, Sue DeGree here. So I appreciate all the comments the public has made. Um, this is very alarming, you may now, hopefully don't mean it to be alarming. I remember the incident, I was on council at the time that Mrs. Verbi mentioned. It was extremely awkward then and now. It felt as if we were trying to hide from the public. It was extremely awkward, and the public at large did not understand what was going on and, and said so then, and where I believe we're saying so again. Putting the word in there about controversy makes it sound like you're afraid of us, as if we're some kind of people to avoid, and silence in some kind of sweet way, as it were, but it's not sweet at all. And, um, worrying about staff time is always important, I don't think it'll ever be an easy time for staff. The public always, also, just elected to pay more taxes because they care about their city, and some things will be controversial, and as we sit here today, we don't know what that controversy is going to be, but it's important enough to allow the public to be controversial, if that's what it turns out to be. That's the opportunity of the messiness of being free people, that we have the right to free speech and we should not be hemmed in, and the five elected people have the right to, to work with us. And if we're at odds with each other, we're at odds with each other, but, but we work it out, and we don't put it off or put it aside or stuff it somewhere else. I'm just very concerned about that. Democracy is messy, and at times it's not comfortable, but that's where we manage to get through messes and come out with solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, appreciate your comment.
We have two more raised hands. Uh, first one is 3484, followed by 6714. Upcoming is 3484.
3484, please press star six to unmute. Give it a moment to unmute, state your name for the record, and give us your thoughts.
Sure, this is Kimberly Williams, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, um, thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I, I'm, this is the first time that I'm encountering this particular issue of, um, a, a criteria like that for staff time, um, and I don't know if this was addressed at an earlier meeting because I, uh, might have missed it, but I'm just wondering, what is the best practice at other city councils? Um, if that question has already been answered, it'd be great to review that. And then, um, it just seems unusual to codify and prioritize a staff need over a public process. And so I would ask you to think about, you know, other ways to address the process issue internally versus by altering a public process that might impede the democratic process for the public to, um, participate, and for our city council members to bring items to the, to the public view that might otherwise not be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. 6714, next on the line?
6714.
6714, please press star six to unmute. Give it a moment to unmute, state your name for the record, and then your thoughts.
Hello, this is, uh, Peter Loeb.
Hi, Peter, go ahead.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I'm just, I just want to support Dinah Verbi's comments, I agree with her, and she did cite a specific example from Pacifica in which the, the, how do I say this, the difficulty of getting something on, a controversial item on the agenda ended up really suppressing the minority position, and I think that that is undemocratic, and, and, and as previous speakers have said, it's against, uh, it, it's against the public participation in the, in the, in the, in the council's, uh, business, whatever. I, I guess I just, I simply want to say that I think the requirement of three, of a majority of the council being necessary to put a controversial item on the agenda is, is, is overkill. It's unnecessary, I think, let me, just simply requiring two, two votes, two council members, uh, would suffice, would, would be adequate. I, I really don't, I think it's a problem to require a majority of the council in order to put a controversial item on the agenda. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Peter.
There are no other raised hands.
And Mayor Big Stick, uh, well, you, maybe we're going to close public input, and then I just had one comment.
Certainly, so I'm going to give another moment for anyone who wants to press star five to raise their hands, given the time delay that we've all experienced. Um, also, we do have one member of the public, if you wish to speak. Very good. Double checking with Emily, that there is no hand raised. Very good, in that which case I will close public comment. City manager?
Yes, I, I just wanted to try to clarify following public comment, I, I don't know if it got lost in the mix or not. No matter the issue, no matter whether it's controversial or mundane business, not only, not, not only is not a majority of council required to put an item on the agenda, a single council member can place that item on the agenda. The difference is the amount of staff and city resources that are going to be spent in preparing that item. So if a council member wants to raise rent control, complex issue, would require a lot of staff time, city attorney time to analyze, what gets placed on the agenda is, does the city council want to prioritize staff time to work on this issue? And like every other city council decision, it's a majority vote. That's democracy, right? And majority vote is what directs the city's resources and staff time. So I, so I just wanted to be clear that any item can get on the agenda, it's just how council prioritizes where city staff resources are spent. An alternative would be, city council could say, as you often do, well, this is a big issue, maybe we should take this up during goal setting in the context of all the city's priorities that staff is working on. So I wanted to just be very, very clear about that, because I don't know if it got lost in the, in the presentation based on the public comments that I heard.
Thank you, and I think it would be prudent to begin our deliberative process with 11.3 so that we can get it out of the way and have that discussion while we're still vaguely awake. I want to start by taking a quick, um, count of head nods because that word controversial was brought up a number of times, and even though those of us on council read in the staff report, you know, controversial was probably the wrong word, we could use a different word, we could get rid of that half a sentence altogether, and I think that ultimately is where we've landed unless we want to wordsmith that, but I think we're just going to strike out potentially controversial items. Is everyone on council okay with getting rid of that word controversial? Are we all on the same page on that one? Okay.
I would suggest, if I may, suggest striking the words potentially controversial items and from that sentence and changing the I on the next word, items to capital I.
Anyone disagree? We're off to a good start. And to the members of the public, I wish I had caught that in advance, and I apologize. We didn't want to create such controversy with the term controversial, but it, it really was a poor choice of word in retrospect, and the idea being simply that if the item is going to be complex, um, we might want to hone in on how much staff time is going to be devoted to it. So I alluded, um, on the other half to the notion that what the original wording said is, all agenda items requiring a detailed staff report. I was in the audience when John Keener was trying to get that one item agendized in 2015. My relatively vague, seven years later recollection was that he brought it up on the dais in that the discussion amongst council in that moment, um, was essentially to take a vote whether or not to bring it up at a future meeting, and it was killed in that way. I apologize if I'm misremembering, I don't know that he had asked for it to be agendized, not in public, whether or not it matters, I don't know. But what is well taken is that the community is giving us an example of when an item that might be important to everybody. might be important to everyone comes up, they don't want it to be summarily killed because of nomenclature in ethics code that people aren't necessarily reading. Kimberly Williams asked about best practices in other councils. City manager, if you could speak to, what are best practices elsewhere? Are there consistent best practices elsewhere?
The, a couple of points about that. One is that, you know, each city is going to be different, and it's up to the city council to decide their rules. So number one, you can do whatever this five city council member decided you wanted to do. But number two, in my experience, this is a best practice. And prior to the September item, I had polled the city managers of all the San Mateo County cities. It was late notice, so I only heard back from seven of them. But all seven have a version of the one hour rule. So, you know, we haven't done an extensive survey of what the best practice is, and in part, I'm not sure it's worth the time to do that, because this council can decide for Pacifica what the best thing to do is. But tools to manage getting staff focus from non-discretionary city items that we need to focus on, and council priorities, are a common best practice, so that just one voice isn't going to send staff resources down a rabbit hole, when it's not known whether the majority of council supports that, that use of resources. That's the premise of, you know, the council manager form of government, and trying to, my responsibility to manage what we're trying to produce, and bring forth to the city council good analysis of items on the agenda.
Thank you for that. And I remember asking for that comparison last time, and you did supply me with the names of the cities. I don't remember them off the top of my head. Not that Pacifica can't carve its own path, but I think it's helpful to know that we're not unilaterally going to be the outlier of the region to create draconian anti-free speech, anti-democracy measures, by adopting what by all accounts seems to be a similar practice to what other municipalities do. That being said, I'm certainly not here discussing this because I'm opposed to free speech, and considering these changes because I'm opposed to free speech, and any other council members can speak differently if they feel differently. I don't think any of them will. Past that, there were two other interesting points that were brought up that I think do bear discussion. One is a larger question about process, which ultimately is what the discussion is. But the other point that was brought up is that we're not used to being districts. And that point was well taken by me, because we're not used to being districts. We don't know what it looks like to have district-specific needs that suddenly arise. And that, I think, is an interesting idea that was brought up, if, and I can think off the top of my head of one or two unique issues that my district does have. And if one of those unique issues were suddenly escalated to a point where I felt some sense of urgency, oh, we should be talking about this, we should be talking about it now. And I'm not making a suggestion, one way or another, how to revise the code as I'm saying this. I'm just saying that if one of those issues suddenly seemed urgent, and I would want to bring it to council, it might be that I would want that brought as a more thoroughly analyzed item than one hour, because I need to let my other council people know this thing is happening. I might need a little background analyzed, and not to the exclusion of the work plan, but simply, this seems to be a unique issue, that suddenly it seems like we maybe should stick it in somewhere. And that's why one of my questions to you on the front end was, well, does it have to be one hour? Could it be five hours? My understanding is in most, well, no, in many cities, a best practice is more like two hours. So maybe by honing into what a proper workload looks like, and I'm talking to my fellow council members, we can get to something closer, somewhere closer to a detailed staff report, as it originally says, but without going overboard to the detriment of a work plan we're trying to enact. And that brings finally back to process. Because for any given item, there is a process about how we devote staff time to it. And generally speaking, not across the board, but generally speaking, we have our goal setting usually in March. We'll be having a goal setting apparently in March, we're still honing the date, when we say, okay, these are the items we'd like to work on for the entirety of the year. And then invariably, things come up between when we set that work plan, and when we set the next work plan. And then we get to reconfigure and rearrange. I think that something's important for me to say to the public is that we're not trying to give our power to city manager. City manager knows what staff time is needed to accomplish what at any given moment, and we need to work closely with city manager to ensure that our work plan is enacted, and that if it's not, if we're taking resources away from that, we want to make sure that as a majority, we are directing staff time to work on something new, and likely to the detriment of something we had prior agreed upon to work on. So I wanted to kick off the thoughts with that. And that having been said, I see a light from council member Vaterlaus, Mayor Protam Vaterlaus?
No.
Mary. Sorry, has an X on it over there. I'm not supposed to use that one.
No, that's...
Says X. Don't use it.
I'm just going to move my post-it over a notch, is what the, I'm going to do. Council member Beer, please.
Thank you. For starters, I really want to apologize to our community for the delay. Hearing the echo in the caller, we don't know how much the delay is until we hear it, right? So I thank our community for hanging in there. Those of you who did call in, thank you so much. Hopefully, we can figure this out with PCT moving forward, so we can get back on track. So thank you for that. Secondly, so I feel like this, the whole idea around this section is so that items moving forward have the proper amount of staff time to work on them. And so I feel like, like, the language that we used here to change it, it was very confusing, very confusing for our community, and that we don't really need to be confusing the community. And when, in my experience on council, we haven't had any problems with this. My personal experience on council. And so, again, it's been my experience that if I had something that I wanted to bring onto the agenda, put onto the agenda, I would talk to Kevin about it, we would have a discussion about it. It would come on the agenda as a consideration item, where we would discuss it. And then, based on that discussion, we'll move forward to whatever happens next. And usually, whatever happens next is what takes the amount of staff time, like the larger amount of staff time. And so I feel like that's worked for us. And so I'm not sure if changing the words in this section is going to change that process. And I just want to make sure that our community isn't feeling like we're chopping them off, like, also, the district, the idea about the districts really made my eyes open up a little bit, like, yeah, my district totally has things that aren't like your district. And so I think that part is important. What I do like is the idea to change it to 10 days. I think that's an absolute must. And then, if one of the callers suggested adding, like, within the next three meetings, or something to that extent, where there's time, like, yeah. I just feel like it's not broken. Why, things have been going fine for us with that.
I'm curious to that point. I feel like sometimes things do come up that are of a more urgent nature. The housing, the eviction moratorium that was referenced that came up in 2015, for example, was a very time-sensitive thing. And so in an alternate universe where it was agendized, and agendized robustly, more robustly than one hour's worth, that's the example of an item where I feel like sometime within the next three agendas might not necessarily cut it. Council member Vaterlaus?
The note about districts, I mean, just because we were elected in districts, we still represent the entire city. And we still care about what happens in the entire city. And yes, we may have an item that applies more to our district than someone else, but I think that we are all reasonable, and do represent the entire city. So I don't know how the districts play into it. That's all.
Council member Beckmeyer.
This item has certainly generated a lot of conversation in the community, and that says to me that the community is paying attention to what we do, which I appreciate. I think I'm a little, I'm going back to some of the public comments we received in email, and I'm trying to figure out all of the statements that were made about restricting the democratic process. And it seemed to be the idea of having a majority of the council agree to put something on a council agenda was stifling, or in some way, limiting the democratic process. And that, I just don't know if I agree with that premise. I think what I was worried about was, it seemed like what was being called for was a specific rule here that's different from the way the council operates as a whole. Everything we do is by majority. And what we, you know, it's not written down, but what we strive for is consensus, actually, in all truth. So, I think what I'd like to say about this particular item is, I think frankly, first of all, I think it's too wordy. And I kind of would like council to consider, my co-council members to consider, striking a bunch of words in the middle, that, these are the words I think we could consider striking. Depending on the urgency of the proposed items such as can occur for action deadlines that apply to proposed state legislation. How about, forget all that, the city manager shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed item should be agendized for council consideration. Because to Mary Beer's point, that's what we do now. And so, all that stuff about urgency and state deadlines and all that, I get that, but I also think that's exactly what is factored into that conversation between the city manager and mayor, when agendizing items. So, I kind of feel like we could simplify and streamline this. We already took a little antecedent clause out of the front of one part of it. So that's one consideration. And that's really all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Council member Bowles, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I thought I had my light on. Did I push the wrong button?
I think it's your light, not mine. But, you know, I did want to speak, so you had my light.
Very good. I'm having light issues this evening. Please.
I'm obviously new here, but I'm curious about what Mary said. Like, is this a problem? Are we trying to fix something that isn't broken, and upsetting everyone in the process? I mean, it's really a question, I mean, has it been an issue? Has a council member gone rogue and, you know, made a lot of work for staff that nobody else agreed to? I mean, I think we all respect our staff, and try to be mindful of their work, and understand, you know, their time constraints and so forth. So I don't know. My first question is whether we need to change it at all. And that's one option. I like what Kimberly said, to not codify staff needs over public process. That really struck me. You know, we're here, we're elected to represent the people, and to bring the people's issues to discuss, and debate, and, you know, decide what the best policies are forward. The staff is not here in the community the way we are, and I think that's a big part of our responsibility. And if it becomes an issue, we can revisit it, right? It's not like we're deciding this forever, if something happens that, you know, takes away from the process that has been working well before.
Before we deliberate further, the time is 10:44. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we extend the meeting till 11:30.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, please vote.
That motion to extend the meeting to 11:30 passes unanimously.
So depending on how this resolves tonight, I favor leaving in the 10 days, personally. And I feel like the part we need to hammer out is the question between what detailed means in the first version versus what might be an appropriate constraint on staff if we, or staff time for agendizing an item if we choose to. If we're going to go with the new language, I actually kind of favor keeping the depending on urgency, yada, yada, yada legislation in. And the reason I favor keeping it in is because I think that, amongst other things, this tells people what they can expect. It tells new council members what they can expect. And even though it's a little bit wordy, I think it gets into a specific that might actually be helpful, like the 10 days. But to my mind, the real question is, the original language requiring a detailed staff report versus, or the old language versus the new language of what that really means if one council member agendizes something. And I say that without offering a suggestion at this time.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Can you give me an example of why you think we need to have the language that I propose striking stay in? I didn't, I can't imagine a scenario why that's urgent.
Yeah, so...
Give me one.
And actually, I would rework it just a little bit, place something somewhere else. But the part, depending on the urgency of the proposed item, the city manager shall consult with the mayor, I think that that's important, to say that even though our common practice would be a minimum of 10 days, or a minimum of seven days, or whatever, if there's something that becomes more urgent, there's instruction there that it's not prohibitive to bring it forward, even though you've passed that timeframe, whatever it may be. I like the idea of, after city managers shall consult with the mayor about proposed agenda item, such as can occur for action deadlines that apply to proposed state legislation, and I would even go a step beyond, say, or other urgent matters. And again, because it's demonstrating an example to someone who might be new, and not knowing what these things could look like. So I rework the phrasing and... So I reworked the phrasing and those are the reasons.
So what I hear you saying is that the depending on the urgency of the proposed item phrase is what allows a council member to actually put something on the agenda with less than 10 days' notice?
Depending on the urgency, yes.
That's what I mean. That's why I hadn't understood it that way at all until you said that. Does that make sense to you, Mary? Right?
Yeah, I did not understand that. And I, I think that there's just too many words, quite frankly. And I'm racking my brain trying to find out the new language that I would prefer. But I just feel like it's what we already do. Like, we're not going to move something forward that, that there isn't a consensus to move forward after, you know, after it's on the agenda, we talk about it for a minute, or whatever.
Or an hour.
Or an hour. But if, ultimately, we make the decision on, and direct staff on whether to move forward with it or not. So having said that, I just don't think that all of this thought part is necessary in here.
I mean, certainly, my experience has been so far that if I bring an item to city manager that I think we should agendize, there's usually what follows, a conversation about what that will take. And, okay, Tiger, this is something that you want to see on the agenda. Do you think it's that critical that we divert staff time, that we do it next week? And if it takes that much staff time, you're going to have to have the rest of council sign off on diverting that much staff time anyway? Do you want to hold off on it? So there is that, that respectful conversation that goes on backstage. I mean, I remember Sue Vaterlaus's first election in which of the four people running for two spots, one of whom may not necessarily have understood being as robustly considerate of time constraints, that might have been an example in which rules like this might have actually come in handy. But racking my brain, it's, you know, and then I cross-reference that with, okay, that's kind of the other side of district elections. You ran unopposed, Mary, and I'm so glad you were. It was a breath, I could breathe easier during that election cycle for you and was so happy you got to rejoin us. But if that person who ran against Sue during that time had run unopposed, again, I, and it's, it's not a matter of whether or not she would have done a good job, it's a matter of whether or not it would have been intuitive to her to intuitively follow decorum as these rules would otherwise suggest.
But we can't put a policy here that is only addressing one type of person. That doesn't, I don't know, that just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem right.
So are you saying that we leave it the way it used to be, the entire struck-out version, except changing seven to 10?
That's what I'm saying.
If I may, Mayor?
Of course you may.
So part, part of bringing this revision forward is that the existing provision says that one city council member can request an item to be agendized seven days in advance, now 10, right? Any council member can request an item to be agendized. And, and the existing language says all agenda items requiring a detailed staff report may be placed on the agenda if the request is made seven days before the council meeting. So a council member can come to me and say, Kevin, I want consideration of an ordinance to do X on the agenda next week. And development of ordinances require a bunch of city attorney time, actually money to pay the city attorney's office, planning staff, whatever department the ordinance affects. And I have, I mean, that's how, so, so that's an example of how the importance, and if I go back to the preamble statement to this council rules, says, it is important for the policy to be transparent about the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of the governing board and staff. So the existing provision is seeming to say that the scenario I just mentioned can happen and it would, we would have to, at one council member's decision, spend $10,000 and, you know, endless hours of staff time to prepare that ordinance and get it on the agenda for the next council meeting. And so part of the goal of clarifying this process and a best practice is to be transparent about how this governance should actually work.
So I'm going to come back to something that a, a lot of the commenters raised, was that moment that happened in 2015. And the idea was something along the lines of, and to those watching, I apologize if I butcher it, I'm going from memory and understanding, so forgive me in advance. But approximately what I think I recall is, again, it was an eviction moratorium. John had wanted to agendize that. And I think during that meeting, it was kind of shot down by the rest of councils, how it went, so that, that never came to fruition. Again, going into the alternate reality where it did happen, what this is suggesting is, if maybe it had been requested otherwise, what would have been successful was getting this eviction moratorium agendized. If you would be able to get it together that quickly, then I would imagine putting together the ordinance ready for a vote is what that translates into. And I think the difference is that it was known in advance that the ordinance was going to ultimately fail. But in the version that is being suggested, okay, maybe it was going to fail, but there's value in agendizing it, so there's a robust discussion about it. And it maybe leads to a deeper process that is gained by having that robust discussion, even though at the end of the day, either way, it's a losing proposition. I think something along those lines is what's being suggested by having that ability.
So if I'm understanding, I, I think, so let's take the eviction, number one, an eviction moratorium decision is an immense amount of staff time and city attorney time to prepare. So council member comes forward, I'd like the council to consider whether to pursue or spend staff resources on preparing an eviction moratorium. That's the agendized item. Council discusses it, public gives input into that discussion, council makes a vote. If it's a majority, then staff is directed to prepare.
Exactly.
The item. And in the meantime, as part of the report, I list off the litany of other things we're working on that we're not going to be able to get done if, if this is happening, but council gets to decide, right? And then we go and prepare it. But it's, the initial item that's agendized is, didn't require much time because we put together, you know, what is an eviction moratorium, you define it, here's the legal issues that need to be considered, just list them off, bullet point, very high level, so that there's enough to discuss about and the public to comment about, right? That's how it works. That's always how it's worked since I've been here as city manager on any item that's been brought forth. Despite this rule, if it would require a lot of staff time, the item that I bring forward is a short decision. Case in point, council member O'Neill's request for the city to pursue a public, private, public-private partnership with the school district, which would cost $10,000, they'd do the feasibility study, you know, interest, et cetera, brought an item to the council, said, do you want to, does a majority want to pursue this? Council discussed it, said, yes, let's pursue this. And then we pursued it. And that wasn't on the work plan or anything, it was a new item to be added, right?
Exactly.
If I could just chime in here, you know, and it's important to note that the city attorney's office takes its direction from a majority of the council. So it is important for us to hear from a majority of the council that they want us to do work as significant as preparing an ordinance. I also want to point out that in, in all of these scenarios, the public still has an opportunity to come and provide public comment. So there is this democratic process. A majority of the council decides, the public still gets to come and comment whether it's agendized by one or if it comes to the council for a majority consideration for further direction and action.
So in the case of an eviction moratorium, you would need full council to weigh in on that before drafting the ordinance presumably?
Well, so if, if, playing out that scenario, if the city manager came to us and said, while we have a council member who wants to agendize this eviction moratorium ordinance, we would say, well, that's a lot of work, you know, we don't feel comfortable preparing this item without getting direction from a majority of the council. We would want to hear from a majority of the council before we undertake all of that effort and time and cost to the city. So, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowles.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just rereading Dine's description of what happened about the eviction moratorium. And, and so there was a short agenda put, put forth. And then the discussion, there was a lot of public comment in support of it, but it was voted down by the majority. I think, I think the real question here is, is whether, you know, I mean, often councils are split three to two, and, and whether we're totally eliminating the minority voice, right? If two council members and a lot of the public really want something, but for whatever reason, the other three don't, is, is there really not a way that, that something that's that important to our community still gets, gets reviewed and, and, and addressed? And I'm, I'm just remembering what city attorney Kenyon said, you know, there's, there's really two different ways that a lot of the cities are organized, so for, for agendizing items. And, and one is, one is what we're discussing now. The other is where you have two council members that vote to put something on the agenda. So you're not the one lone rogue council member to do something, you have to at least convince another person, but it still gives the opportunity, sorry, it still gives the opportunity for the minority voice on the council to have a say in what gets discussed. I can read, I can read you Half Moon Bay's ordinance if, if, if you like, that's the way, that's the way theirs is written. A council member may request an item to be considered on a future agenda, and if a second council member agrees with the request, staff will prepare a staff report. Anyway. So it's another way, another way to look at it, if, if we're, if you're really worried about a rogue council member, you know, wanting to put a lot of, of work on staff that's not supported otherwise.
Because e- either way, right? So if the, either way, we're still going to have the conversation about how we want it to move forward.
Right.
And so there will be an opportunity for us to vote on whether we want it to move forward or not.
Right.
Councilmember Vaterlaus?
I'm so sorry.
No. I looked again at the old way it was written, and if, if you changed it to the reconsideration, to consideration of the item, shall require the majority approval of the council. No?
I think that's a whole different thing it's addressing at, at the end in the last sentence.
I know, but I, I changed it because, well, except that then that goes back to the other, but I don't know, if only two people are requesting it and it's, it's going, I don't know how to say this, it's going to fail, then we've just spent a lot of time on something that isn't going to pass. Although you, you have given the public the right to speak and therefore could change the mind of somebody who was against something. But that happens in the very beginning, when we bring it forward for discussion, that the members of the public get to speak and the council gets to speak. And I've changed my mind lots of times. You may think you read through everything and you have your mind made up and you come and you find out you don't, based on what the public says and based on what the other council members have said. So I see it coming to the entire council.
I definitely favor keeping it that one council can agendize, because frankly, I think even if they are the lone wolf, they might have a very good sense of something that the community should have an opportunity to speak out on. Working, how much staff time should go to a report that one council member asks for, I think is an interesting question. But that being said, even a one-hour staff report, I think is not nothing, and I think it can be thoroughly augmented by a council member who feels passionately about an item, coupled with whatever the turnout is from the public on that item. And frankly, even for items that aren't strictly agendized, you know, it's been many a time I have seen an outpouring of public during public communication in which the entire room was filled and person after person robustly gave feedback to the point that then council felt like they had enough to work with that they could agendize later. I think we're well accustomed to giving robust opportunity for public feedback, and I don't know that any which way we change this will change that. I think that by me, the point is well taken that there's process in order to come to the conclusion of what we as a body, a majority of the body, determines should take substantial staff time. And while I'm not sure if one hour quite fits the bill for the analysis needed when one council member does a request, I'm also convinced it shouldn't take up half of the work plan for the year. So right now, I'm kind of erring on the side of what's brought before us with getting rid of controversial items, changing it to 10 days, and maybe haggling about whether it's one hour of staff time or five, but after all the discussion I've just heard, the language proposed makes sense to me.
Two hours?
I hear two hours. So I have two council members who seem to be interested in this language with two hours.
So maybe, because it says, okay, hear me out. Oh, wait, here's my light. Sorry.
Your light shines brightly regardless of buttons.
Always, oh, always. Okay. May require one or more hour staff time to sufficiently analyze and prepare a staff report for council consideration will be first agendized to ask the city council if staff time should be spent on preparing a report on the proposed item. So I think that that, there might be confusion in that part of it. If staff time should be spent preparing a report on the proposed item, I don't know it, because there's going to have to be a small report if we're going to discuss it in the first place. So what we would be discussing later is, you know, what direction we're going to give that moving forward. So maybe there's a confusion there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make, did make sense, and I hadn't seen it until you just said it, because I'd been so focused on the other part. So if we could start by, and I'm, for the sake of conversation, if you just strike preparing a report on the proposed item and then reworking that to be something other than that. Because I, if I could babble for just a moment, I think what we're getting at is if staff time should be spent on taking a deeper dive, or I don't know what to call it.
Well, because that's not, my point is that wouldn't be the only thing we would be talking about, about the item. So we wouldn't come and just say, so, should we spend time on this or not? No, there would be a small report, we would talk about the item, we would get public comment, we would deliberate, then give direction, so.
Figure out what to call it, and you've got me sold. And prepare a
City attorney, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to suggest that may require more than one hour of staff time to completely analyze and prepare the agenda item, something like that, so that it encompasses the entire item rather than the staff report.
Say that again, please.
So just saying, instead of to prepare a staff report for council consideration, if it takes, if it, if the items that may require more than one hour of staff time to sufficiently, or to completely, now I've forgotten what I was going to say, to completely analyze the agenda item.
You're making a distinction between analyzing and the, the staff report itself.
Right, exactly. So it's just not, it's not just the staff report, it's the entire item. Because a staff report could take an hour, but you still need the ordinance, or you need the resolutions, or you need whatever you're going to need. So to completely analyze the item.
Because that's what we're talking about anyway, analyzing the item to bring forward to determine whether more time should be spent doing a resolution or whatever in the future.
Right, but I think councilmember Beer was saying that the threshold issue shouldn't be one hour of staff time to prepare the staff report, because a staff report has to be prepared either way. So it should be, how long is it going to take to, to really completely prepare this item? Whether it be an ordinance, whether it be an agreement, whether it be some, some other document. And then, that, that time limit applies to the entire item, because there will be a staff report that has to be prepared for that item regardless.
Right. If staff time should be spent on taking up an item?
Okay.
On fully taking up the proposed item, something like that?
Or you could just say one, more than one hour to prepare.
If I'm understanding correctly, yes, we could say in here, preparing the staff report, in my mind, that's under researching the item, analyzing the item, evaluating alternatives, you know, providing the analysis, background discussion, et cetera, that's preparing a staff report. And so we could just simplify it though, and say, you know, time limit related to preparing an item for council consideration. We don't have to say a staff report or whatever, it's just preparing an item, which means a staff report and all the analysis, et cetera.
But that's always going to take more than an hour, always.
So here's an example. There was a piece of legislation related to net energy usage, Mayor Big Stick, you remember that PCE item, right?
Sure.
It's a quick conversation with PCE, it was a quick request of what, what did Burlingame do in their letter, and it was essentially a fairly quick writing of the staff report, one hour, give or take a little bit. I didn't, I, you know, a lot of these I do myself, and I didn't do a lot of analysis on it, I just said, "Here's the analysis that Burlingame conducted, attached it," and it was agendized as a legislative support item in that case. So that's an hour item, basically. If there was, you know, am I happy with the analysis that I put into that staff report? No, because we really want to, you know, there's, there's oftentimes could be a lot of issues to analyze on, on either side, and that's where it gets more of, "Well, it's going to be pretty complicated to analyze that, and it's going to take not just my time, but city attorney's time, or, you know, whatever department staff's time." It's a, each, each time, it's a judgment call. And just, there are sort of one-hour items that can be easily agendized for council decision on that agenda, yes or no on this item. There's others where it's, you know, needs to be, do we want to expend all that money on developing the ordinance, you know?
Right, and I, I think my sense is surely there's a way that we can agendize something quickly whereby we're enabling council to have the discussion, do we want to really take a deeper dive on this? Do we want to fully flesh it out? Do we want to keep pursuing this? Or is there no will on council to keep pursuing this? And there are instances where we want to have, we want to be empowered to have that conversation, we want to be empowered to have that conversation publicly. To my sensibility, I think one council member should be able to bring forth that conversation, and that doesn't necess, that shouldn't mean staff time is taken to fully assess all the ramifications, it means you put your staff report together to say, "You are going to have this conversation to decide if you really want staff to do everything needed if there's a majority of council." And that's what we're getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I may.
Please do.
I think what, something that city manager just said, made a distinction between an item such as the net zero energy writing that letter, right? The difference in that case was it would take an hour or so, if I'm hearing you right, to prepare a brief description, as in the staff report, wi- with alternatives for council to vote on it that night, versus something that's going to take more than an hour to prepare, to research, to look at, to eventually have council vote on it, because it's going to be probably more detailed than that. And that's the one, those cases are the ones that we want to agendize to decide if we're going to do it or not. But the, this description doesn't talk about the first example. So it feels like, when you read this language, it feels like we're going to have to agendize every decision we're going to make. And we're not. A lot of times, we don't have to agendize a discussion about voting on something, it's just brought forward by a council member, in your case, he puts it on the agenda, we voted on it that night, right? But the ones that are going to be more study, before he would go, or any staff member, to the effort of the days or month, you know, I mean, hours that it would take to prepare this full item, we would direct that to be done. Right? Like we do now.
Like we do now. Right. That's what I mean, that's what we're doing now. Mike talked about public-private partnerships, we didn't, you know, discuss it, and one night we're still discussing it. But we had to make the decision on whether we were going to or not. So I, I feel like that's what we do already, and all of this is confusing our community, and it's confusing me. So how can we simplify it so that staff is given enough time to do what they need to do, you know, and we're allowed to, you know, talk about it and make that decision? Go for it, Subor.
Do people object to the detailed staff report, instead of specifically an hour? The detailed staff report, which was in the old one, and then continue to say they can place it on the agenda with 10 days, a council member request to agendize an item for consideration shall require the majority approval of the council. I just took out a couple words out of that last.
No, but, but what you just said is that we would decide if, if a coun, one council member can bring an item.
And they can, with 10 days, one person can bring an item.
Yeah.
If it's going to require a detailed staff report, then we all make the decision of whether to continue on that item or not. Does that make sense?
We have 10 minutes.
Nope, look at, they go, "Ugh." They both put their hands on their head.
I know.
That's kind of how I feel about it, too.
Trying to coalesce a few of the comments that I just heard, councilmember Beckmeyer was talking about the, the converse here, which is not explicitly mentioned. So if, if an item that requires less than one hour of staff time to prepare for council consideration would be agendized for council consideration and decision. An item that requires more than one hour of staff time to prepare for council consideration would be prepared and agendized for council to give direction on the next steps on the item.
Sounds good.
In other words, to spend more time, more analysis.
I like that.
That works for me.
Yeah, I still think an hour is nothing, though, if it's, I don't know, I mean, going back to what you were saying before, if, if we really want to flesh something out, and we need a little bit more to be able to understand it, to, to know if we want to go further.
And given that we're not staff, and we don't know quite exactly how it pans out, what, what is your sense of what inadequate time frame might be?
I, I don't have a sense, because I think, I mean, it, it can really vary, and that's, that's why it's dangerous to, to put, you know, something that's finite in there. But, I mean, maybe they're not measuring their time exactly, you know, I don't know.
I mean, so may require more than about one hour, although to your point, and I come to this number because in some other cities, they explicitly say two hours, and that's, several cities that I saw do that. So maybe about two hours might be inappropriate.
That would help, huh?
Is that closer to what sounds reasonable to you? Would a different number sound reasonable?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, the majority-minority thing, too, though, which is part of what we were hearing today about either, you know, districts, or, I mean, the council does shift back and forth, right?
That's true, but it's some-
And so to, to always allow the minority voice, to, to not, like, totally silence them out, that's, that's what I'm worried might happen.
But does our process now do that?
Well, I mean, it hasn't been an issue, so, like, yeah, but-
That's my point, yeah.
But, well, I mean, according to them, I mean, it, it has happened before, so.
What we need to do, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
What we need to do is vote on whether or not to extend our meeting further.
Uh huh.
I vote to extend the meeting to midnight.
Okay.
No.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion by Vatalas, second by Bowles, please vote.
Motion to extend meeting to midnight passes unanimously.
And that's, that's why I am relatively adamant that we keep it to one member able to agendize on the one hand, but on the other hand, at the end of the day, we decide as a majority. And I think that having one council member having the ability to agendize something to the tune of about two hours of staff time to prepare a report, so that it's brought to a council meeting, so that we can discuss it amongst ourselves, so that the public has every opportunity to say their piece, that is giving minority voice, if it should so happen that the majority decides, you know, "We don't really want to continue this discussion and put more staff time toward it, past what we've already done for this particular agenda." And I think that's as close to minority voice as you can get within the context that it will always be a majority of council that makes a decision.
Yeah.
Mr.-
No, I, I think just what I'm, what I'm hearing a little bit is a little bit of distrust in the public, I guess, of, I mean, as, as this example, I don't know if there was a lot of opinion the other direction or not, but where, where there are a lot of public voices for or against one item, and yet the council still, you know, votes otherwise, and whether the public really feels listened to. I, I think that's the fear that I'm hearing in, in a lot of the comments.
Would you say that again into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm-
No, it's all right, but I, I really think that was an important point you just raised, and I want to make sure everybody hears what you just said.
Yeah, so, so I think what I'm hearing from the public is, is the fear that when a, a good number of the public come to speak in favor or against a particular item, and then the council votes the other way, that, that there's not a trust that the public feels listened to. And I, and I think that's where some of the fear is coming forth in some of these comments, that, you know, maybe there's only a minority of the council that really strongly wants to support that, but, but there's a strong public will. And, and of course, I mean, they, you know, they can vote us out, or recall us, or, you know, whatever. I mean, there, there is a recourse. Anyway, just, just expressing what I'm hearing.
There are 38,000 people in this town, and seven people came and talked tonight. A group of seven people that has a very good distribution system between them, and pass the items to their group. How large is that actual group? Large, a lot larger than six or seven, and that is such a small minority of our public. It is what we heard from. It doesn't necessarily represent our whole public.
Yeah, but the whole public isn't here, and it's the people that are engaged. And I'm not just talking about this issue, it's, it's, there are other issues where that they don't feel listened to, you know. I won't, I won't bring up examples, but, anyway, I feel bet, I feel better about it that way with taking out controversial, having a little bit more staff time, having it come back to us.
And do you feel good about councilmember Beckmeyer's idea of having the other?
The converse.
The converse, thank you. I kept going contrarian.
That a short thing can get put on immediately, yes, absolutely.
Do we have consensus?
Okay, so I need it, like, spelled out. Like, what exactly are we, are you asking me to have consensus about?
Can, clerk coffee, can you write down what?
I can try to restate what I had said.
Okay, thank you.
Open to any, any revisions to it, but the, first, we would remove potentially controversial items, and, so I think you maybe have already removed that. So the first sentence would be, "Items that may require less than one hour of staff time to prepare for council consideration can be agendized upon request, or just agendized for, wait, let me back up, for council consideration and decision." We need to finish that sentence somehow.
And decision.
And decision. And then, "Items that may require more than one hour of staff time to prepare for council consideration will be first, will be agendized for council direction on next steps."
There we go.
And then, "To continue, requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made of the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting." There was discussion potentially about deleting that next clause about depending on the urgency, but, so we should get direction on whether to leave that in or not.
I think now that we have the clause about for items that require less than one hour, it's a lot easier for me to delete that other chunk.
Well, first, we agendize it and for consideration and direction on next steps.
And I thought, were we not deciding on, on two hours for?
Yes, two hours, please. That was my understanding. Does anyone object to two hours?
No.
No.
City manager, does that seem onerous from your perspective?
No, that's fine.
Very good.
Two hours, 10 days, distinction. Things that can be agendized and discussed versus things that can be agendized, discussed, and voted on.
To prepare an item for council consideration?
Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Let's, let's- I think removing four and just start that sentence with items. So if we could, if Clerk Coffee could read that back.
So for section 11-3, the text that I have here is, "An individual council member may agendize an item for a city council meeting by contacting the city manager. Items that may require less than two hours of staff time to prepare for council consideration can be agendized for council consideration and decision. Items that may require more than two hours of staff time to prepare for council consideration will first be agendized for council consideration and direction on next steps. Requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made to the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting. Depending on the urgency of the proposed item, such as can occur for action deadlines that apply to proposed state legislation, the city manager shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed item should be agendized for council consideration."
I don't think we need that part.
Seems a little redundant.
Well, depending on the urgency of the proposed item, the city manager shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed item should be agendized. So I would say, take out the "such as can occur for action deadlines" that apply to proposed legislation. I think that's the part that can be taken out.
It might be local things that we need to do urgently, too, but, yeah.
Right.
Doesn't need to be that specific.
So the last sentence would read solely, "The city manager shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed, uh, item should be agendized for council consideration."
If at the first part of that sentence, you can leave "depending on the urgency of the proposed item."
Oh, you just take out the middle, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying just-
I think we should take that whole, that whole part out. Because we already said if-
We did say it. My concern is the urgency piece of it. I want it to be understood that if somebody feels a need for urgency, they can consult with city manager and mayor to bring it forward. And fewer than 10 days.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would suggest-
Please.
Adding language that says, "Except for items where the mayor and the city manager have determined are of an urgent nature, requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made to the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting."
Very good.
I like that.
Yes.
You're good, Sarah.
Seems like we have a lot of council considerations repeated. Prepare. Items that may require more than one, more, two hours of staff time to prepare will first be agendized for council consideration and direction on next steps.
We could just say, "Agendized for a council meeting," or some, you know, we don't have to say "consideration" after each.
It's the redundancy of council consideration, council consideration that I was trying to work around.
And it, that's my, that might be better, because actually, I know Clerk Coffee had used a capital C for "consideration," but, but at times, these are, might be on consent. So a legislative support item, like, I believe, was on, on consent.
If we could have a clean version of this to look at, I think it might be helpful, so... Right.
You mean, right now?
There she goes.
Or do you want to consider it for future agenda?
That's so funny.
Except for items-
So I've, I've switched the view to a clean version, showing what looks like we've settled on. "An individual council member may agendize an item for a council, a city council meeting by contacting the city manager. Items that may require less than two hours of staff time to prepare for council consideration can be agendized for council consideration and decision. Items that may require more than two hours of staff time to prepare for council consideration will be agendized... Will first be agendized for a future council meeting and direction on next steps." For, for discussion and direction on next steps.
And then the, the 10 days. I just don't understand the urgent, like...
Because I want it to be clear that if there's an urgent matter, it can be agendized in fewer than 10 days.
Okay, but it doesn't say that.
Except for items where the mayor and city manager have determined an urgency, requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made to the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting. The city manager shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed item should be agendized for council consideration.
So do you think, Mayor, you're saying an urgency doesn't cover it the way it says "an urgency"?
Could consider adding "time urgency."
I mean, because, I mean, I appreciate that if it's urgent and we can put it on, it doesn't, it can be before 10 days, but that's not what that sentence is just tell, is telling me. So I don't, I'm sorry, it's late, maybe my brain is done. So how about we?
Here's a suggestion, more generally. If, from time to time, there, there may, uh, be an urgent, you know, deadline that the mayor and city manager would need to discuss if an item is to be agendized for less than 10 days. But to get to that, not that exact wording, but to kind of phrase it that way.
In the way that this is written, only the urgent items require 10 days.
Except for items.
Except for items where-
A minimum of 10 days. The exception is urgent items.
Right.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me.
Well, that's, maybe we should rearrange the sentence.
Put the exception at the end?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Not at the beginning.
"Requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made to the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting, except..."
Urgent, time urgency items.
For items where ma, mayor and city manager have determined an urgency. We're about to make it shorter, right?
Good point. The, the last sentence maybe isn't necessary.
Are we happy with this, counsel? I'm seeing head nods. Um, are there any other parts of this past 12.7 that we want to take up? I specifically went straight to the-
I'd like to add something, or consider adding something.
What do you got?
I didn't move on. The, the three-minute comment section on page 462, I, uh, as I was reading Hapman Bay's ordinance, they had a, um, uh, another sentence that said, "For public speakers in need of translation services, the speaker timer will be paused during translation." And I, I like that. We haven't had to use it, but I think that's a welcoming thing for our non-English speakers.
I've seen it doubled.
Councilmember Bowles, can you please repeat the language?
Yes. "For public speakers in need of translation services, the speaker timer will be paused during translation."
As long as we have translation services.
I would like to point out that under the Brown Act, public speakers whose comments are translated into a different language get double the time, so...
So, and because that's a law, then we, we don't need to repeat it in our council rules?
That's nice.
It would be nice to-
It's nice to add it.
This is a little different, because it talks about pausing the time. So, in other words-
Well, I think either way, I'm happy with doubling, too, but I think it-
Double the time, but put it in there just for the niceness of it.
Yeah.
So what we're putting in is the doubling of the time? Okay, so let's refer to the double of the time and for those who need translation services.
And, and I just had a question about the 5A for the appeals. I, I appreciate the extra three minutes that were added. Sometimes someone doesn't use their whole 10 minutes and wants a longer rebuttal, and they didn't seem to allow that option.
I, I think we can look back at that language. I seem to remember the council discussing that, is that you take up to 10 minutes. So, so an appellant doesn't have to take 10 minutes, can take up to 10 minutes. And then you would get a three-minute, um, uh, a follow-up, what's the word?
Rebuttal.
Rebuttal.
But what if they only take eight minutes?
Right.
Can they have five for their rebuttal?
No. Uh, the, I mean, the, the point would be, you, you take as much as you want, up to 10 minutes, and then you get three minutes for a rebuttal. So if you take five minutes, take eight minutes, you still just get three minutes for a rebuttal.
Specifically, the idea being that both parties have equal time to do what they're doing. And, um, once upon a time, we did it that way, and I don't remember when we changed it, because I swear to goodness, when I started sitting over in that chair, that's the way we used to do it. The reason I like it is because it's clear and it gives both parties equal time to do what they need to do.
So the, two of the items that are sort of unresolved are related to a standing special meeting date. You know, as council is aware, whenever we have the need for special meetings, we pull council members, we figure out a time, you know, so that's our ad hoc approach. If, if the council was interested, I think Clerk Coffee had figured out what months have 5th Mondays. There's only a few-
There aren't very many, because one of them is a holiday.
Yeah, there's only a few. Whether we want to talk about that or just not worry about the standing special meeting day or identify the three other, well, now, two other. I'm looking at the list. It looks like July 31st and October 30th are the only other 5th Mondays of this calendar year. May 29th is Memorial Day, and, uh, so...
Well, that's two special meetings that we know we have a date for.
Yeah.
And yet it doesn't quite solve the problem.
So if we wanted that bandwidth, we could say, you know, this is just for, in case they're needed, and the council calendar would reflect a hold on those 5th Mondays as a special meeting day, if needed. So we could write that into the rules. Then the other item was the, um, clear whether we wanted to revisit or just have staff refine the motion to reconsider language. We had talked about that earlier, and it was a little bit confusing. And we had said we needed to get back to it.
What page are we looking at?
Not extending the time past midnight.
Ever. There it is, isn't it?
We, we are looking. Did you find it?
Yeah.
It's, uh, page 12, uh, page 12 on the document, uh, packet page 471. It seemed that reverting to the original language might take care of the confusion.
Oh, I thought we'd-
Agreed on that.
Yeah.
Well, that was during the presentation, so-
Gotcha.
Where we leave that first sentence in.
Fine.
Agreed.
Does that cover it? I think that works.
So I think, um, Mr. Mayor, the, there is a sentence in the middle of that section that says, "The purpose of reconsideration is to bring back the matter for review at the next meeting." So I don't think that, uh, needs to be included. So we can either strike the whole sentence or strike at the next meeting.
Because it would be heard at the same meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
A motion can only be made during the meeting when the action was taken, but it can be reconsidered at the next meeting, can it?
The item can.
The item can. Got it.
I have a question, perhaps for Assistant City Attorney Buzano. So the last sentence says, "Nothing in this section would preclude a council member from bringing an item back to consider at a future council meeting as a new agenda item." Can a council member who, uh, was on the, um, not prevailing side, do that for the same item?
Yeah, there was that. Yes, the council member who was on the losing side of the motion could bring back an item, uh, at the, at a future meeting. That's what that language says, and there's nothing in the future agenda items that would preclude-
At which point, if it takes more than two hours-
That would be like my example.
Reopen all of that.
You could bring anything back that happened in the past, right? On, as a new agenda item.
Right.
That was my example.
But, but does that need to be here as part of reconsideration?
It alleviates the concern that if a motion for reconsideration fails, it can't be therefore brought back as a different agenda item as a later date.
A motion to reconsider is a specific parliamentary procedure to have the body consider something that they just took action on. Like, oh, we just learned that XYZ is important, but we didn't have that information at the time we made the motion. So the, the, a member of the majority that was successful in the motion, original motion, can bring back the motion through this motion to reconsider or bring back the action through a motion to reconsider. But like I said, it's a very specific parliamentary procedure. It's not meant to preclude that item from ever coming back to the body. It's just meant to sort of revisit the issue itself to decide whether there's a different decision or outcome that the body wants to make.
And a council can have it agendized for reconsideration after the meeting itself, right?
For consideration.
Yes, for consideration, right. So, yeah, just be a, a new item.
Okay.
So I just want to be clear. Theoretically, a council member on the losing side of a vote on an issue, could each agenda request that i, that item be agend- So I just want to be clear, theoretically, a council member on the losing side of a vote on an issue, could each agenda request that I, that item be agendized again? Add infinitum going through the same vote. Is that correct?
Okay.
Not saying that happens, but it's a possibility.
Can I ask a question, too, about ties? Because it said something about ties. Well, if they're, in Roberts' rules, if there's a tie, if someone has recused themselves and they're in the back, and it's two to two, then it's a, it loses.
Right.
Yeah, so... I don't think it says that. No action...
Did we change it?
No. A tie vote generally means that no action has been taken on a matter.
Well, that's not, but it doesn't really mean that.
Stands.
If there's a tie vote, it loses.
Well, it, it loses in the sense that no action is taken, but, but you know, like, it's not going to proceed forward. But the reality is, is that no action has taken because there's not a majority.
It's an effective no, even though it's not a technical no.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Practically speaking, it's a no, but technically speaking, no action was taken.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the reconsideration language, and then, did I, was there a council majority about the special meeting days, special Mondays, or just not worry about that now?
So, the special Mondays don't necessarily seem like enough to me, should, and I don't know that we have enough time to hammer through any other dates. Is, is the idea that there aren't any other days on a regular basis where nobody has anything?
I think that...
Okay. I, I'm fine including, and again, by consensus, I'm fine including those two dates as standing dates, and then after that, we can do the poll method like we usually do.
Yeah, so at least there's two.
Two, yeah.
Yeah, and so we'll, we'll just generally say the, you know, fifth Mondays that are not holidays, something like that.
The July thirty-first might fall during the time we generally have vacation?
Correct.
Good idea. Sorry.
Don't we have a little break at that time, generally?
Yes, the second meeting in July, we typically...
So we'll take that anyway and put this one on.
So October thirtieth is what I'm hearing.
But wait, that's the day before Halloween. No, I'm just kidding. We can meet then.
So then why don't we just leave that off? If, if we're going to take, put one day in there.
I mean, in practice, we do, if, if there happens to be an issue we need to take up, and there's actually a fifth Monday that's on the horizon, we will look at that day. For polling, to see if council's available. I think the difference is, you know, council members block out days that are designated at the beginning of the year, so, but we can still have that practice, so...
It, it would be charming to have a standing special study day, but October thirtieth seems to be it.
So, so were we generally going to leave that language in or not? No, okay.
I don't think so unless someone disagrees. Was there any other direction we needed? Do we need a motion? We need a motion, right?
Yes, we do need a motion and vote on this item.
Move to accept the recommendation on council rules and ethics.
As amended.
A second.
We got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
So at the time of eleven fifty-three, I'm adjourning this meeting with the memory and thoughts of the seven members of our Half Moon Bay community who are no longer with us as of this afternoon. Meeting adjourned.